I'm sorry. Everybody except for Commissioner. Yeah.
They're standing.
Is it on? Please rise for flags, too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and the republic of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sunshine notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, May 20, 2025. The time is now 7:06. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the November 21st, 2024, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Store Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci's absent excuse. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Kelly?
Present.
All present mayor except for Commissioner Tucci, he's absent excuse this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Minutes, please.
We have executive session minutes for January 7th, 2025, January 21st, 2025, February 4th, 2025, February 18th, 2025, March 18th, 2025, April 1st, 2025, and April 15th, 2025.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
That's it for minutes.
Thank you. Communications, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three. Now, the Educational Foundation, Inc., has submitted an application for a social affair permit for the SIP Saber and Support Event at Kingland's Manor, at 3 Kingston Street, on Thursday, June 12, 2025, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. The VFW Holding Company of Nutley has submitted an application for a social affair permit for their post-party on Saturday, June 7, 2025, from 1 p.m. to 5 p.m. at 271 Washington Ave. And the Nutley Family Service Bureau has submitted an application for a social affair permit for their garden party scheduled for Sunday, September 14, 2025, from 4 p.m. to 7 p.m. at 205 Rutgers Place. Motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think we'll turn it over to Commissioner Petracca for a proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a very special guest, Sarafina Khan, that I'm very happy to read this proclamation to her and her family. Whereas Sarafina Khan, currently a seventh grader at John H. Walker Middle School, was nominated by her math and science teacher, Mrs. Johnson, to attend Tech Trek, a week-long camp offered to New Jersey seventh grade girls. And whereas Sarafina is a straight A student who excels in math and science, and also figure skates and plays the piano. Whereas as where as a part of this election process, Sarafina sent in several essays and was interviewed by the camp leadership committee. And whereas Sarafina was informed in April that out of 100,000 seventh grade girls in New Jersey, she was one of 40 girls to be chosen to attend this prestigious camp. And whereas tech camp, tech, tech, excuse me, girls are immersed in world that empowers and encourages them to think themselves as future scientists, engineers, mathematicians, and computer specialists. Whereas in addition, Tech Trek campers take part in activities like programming robots, extracting their own DNA, formulating lip gloss in a chemistry lab, and visiting coastal waters or pineland preserves. Now therefore be proclaimed by Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Sarafina Khan be hereby recognizing the plaid for her tenacious young spirit that earned her a spot at Tech Trek Camp this summer. We look forward to seeing her continue to accomplish in the next few years. I would like to say congratulations and give her a round of applause. That is well, well, well reserved. And I have to say, I'm so proud of you. I've seen you in my deli since you were a little girl growing up. And you are Bakes Nutley Shine. And you, you really, really are doing a terrific job. We're all so proud of you. I know I am proud of you. You have your grandparents here, your mom and dad. And it's really, in the almost 18 years I've been sitting up here, it's the one of the best proclamations I ever read. So you're like family to me. And I am so proud of you. And if anybody would like to chime in, and then we'll take a picture.
You want to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. Uh, congratulations, congratulations, Sarafina. It's great to see the interest of young women in the STEM fields and for you to participate in this event is, we're so proud of you and all of you accomplished in your very short time, you know, here. But we know you're going to go on and do great things in the future. So congratulations and good luck at the camp.
Sarafina, just one, congratulations to you and your family. Be proud of the fact that you brought honor to your family name. I think everybody can can stand by that. It's something I think in this world today is so very, very important, is understand who you are, who your family is, what your family values are, and what they stand for. So congratulations in that regard. As Commissioner Scarpelli mentioned, the whole STEM area is so critical to our future. Very quickly, we're going to be living in a world where AI, and if you are familiar, generative AI with agentic AI, we're moving into a world very quickly in the next few years where AI agents are going to be autonomous. So the programming and the security, but more importantly, the, the influences on how you use those productively and safely in society at large is going to need people like you, who understand it deeply, who will grow with it, and will make sure that we take something like this technology and use it for the betterment of society, right, versus the detriment. So congratulations to you. And I do recall, I think in high school, I did get an A in science once. So, so congratulations.
I just want to add my congratulations to you, Sarafina. As someone who has a, a science degree, I kind of went the other way. But it definitely brings a smile to my face in knowing that we have a young woman in the going, pursuing STEM. I try and push all my nieces to pursue STEM. We don't have enough people in STEM across genders, but it's even more pronounced with women. And I just want to say, if you can take your mayor to the camp, I would love to come because I'd love to do some programming of robots and extracting my own DNA. This sounds like a great camp. I'm actually a little jealous of you. I would love to go, go with you. But one of the things that science allows you to do is it allows you to think critically. And that's going to set you up for success, no matter where you decide to go in life, whether you decide to stick with STEM or you decide to go in a different direction like I did and become a lawyer. You're going to be set up for success in life. And I'm looking forward to see what your future brings you. And I'm, I'm proud to be a footnote in your success story as part of this proclamation. And I'm looking forward to seeing what you can do. Thank you.
We will play to bring her up and let her say a few words. Come up to the mic.
Sam, you might want to help her with that mic.
Is that, Sam, Sam, is that?
I think it's on.
Can you lower that a little bit for her, please? Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I would like to thank my parents for always helping me achieve my goals. And my sisters for always making sure I have like fun. I would also like to thank all my teachers for guiding me along in my science journey. Yeah. Thank you. Congratulations.
That's great.
Let's, let's take a quick picture now.
Mom and Dad, you want to come up, too?
Yep.
Sarafina, if you and your family want to take this opportunity to leave here, you're more than welcome to, unless you want to stay. Maybe you'll catch the political science bug and you'll be at Political Science Camp next summer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I see we have reports, Code Enforcement Report. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a report for March 25 and for the first quarter for the Code Enforcement Department.
Excellent. Thank you. Bills, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for May 20, 2025. Public Affairs, $85,284.67. Revenue and Finance, $3,438,669.67. Public Safety, $265,663.92. Public Works, $80,168.10. Parks and Public Properties, $64,127.85. Water Sewer Utility, $90,026.69. Payroll as of May 9. Regular payroll total, $961,007.90. Overtime payroll total, $71,758.81. Total payroll, $1,032,766.71, for a grand total of $5,056,707.61.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have public comment on agenda items only. This is public comment on agenda items only. Those wishing to be heard on agenda items only, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record, please. Seeing none, we'll move on to board. Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans?
Nothing for me this evening, Mayor.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Nothing, Mayor.
Commissioner Petracca?
I'm fine tonight.
I just have one, a quick announcement. This upcoming weekend is, as many of you know, is Memorial Day weekend. We'll be having our annual Memorial Day Parade at 11:00 a.m. starting at the Oval and ending at the Oval. We invite everyone to come out for the parade and remember that Memorial Day is a day to remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice in service of our nation. And prior to the parade, every year, we have a, we have, we have a bus provided by the Parks Department that we start at 7:30 a.m. at the VFW, and we go to every single war monument in town and read the names of every single person who paid the ultimate sacrifice from Nutley. It's 142 names, 142 names from the Revolutionary War up to the present have given their lives in service of this nation. And we honor them starting at 7:30 on Memorial Day. It's open to everyone who wants to attend. And now that we have the monuments lined up in the park, it'll be a nice, smooth, solemn walk. And I do also want to thank Commissioner Tucci, who's not here, who helped put the banners in the park. And I also want to take, thank Commissioner Scarpelli, whose department helped put the banners up on the street and in the Yanacote Park. We've had tons of positive feedback. Positive is an understatement. Everyone loves the banners. And I, they believe, and I believe that it makes our town more patriotic and more beautiful. So with that, we'll go into resolutions. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. My department contributed a lot of positive thinking.
Okay. Well, everyone, every, everyone on this board is strongly in favor of veterans. And so everyone has a, has a helping hand when it comes to veterans.
My first resolution is granting exemption for the veteran. So, so the theme. Whereas New Jersey Statute 54, colon, four, dash, dash, three, dot, 30, provides that war veterans who were honorably discharged from active service in a time of war in any branch of the armed services of the United States who have been or shall be declared by the United States Veterans Administration to be totally and permanently disabled, connected with their wartime service, a full tax exemption of their dwelling and lot on which it is situated. And whereas the following taxpayer has filed an application for allowance of full exemption with proper supporting documentation, thus making the taxpayer eligible. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Cesar Nikadas, they granted full exemption on payment of the property taxes beginning May 1st and all subsequent years for blocks 3,600, Lot 3, also known as 129 Rutgers Place. Be further resolved that the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund $2,720.71 for 2025 property taxes. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye, and thank you for your service.
Be resolved that by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of tax charges in the amount of $2,889.93 for block 6,600, Lot 23. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of a professional real estate appraiser to assist with real estate appraisals, tax appeals, and tax court appearances, and to complete the necessary procedures to ensure the capture of added assessments arising from ongoing improvement activities in the Township of Nutley as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to NJSA 19, colon, 44A, dash, two, 20, dot, five. And whereas Associated Appraisal Group, Inc., 1717, Route 208, Suite 210, Fairlaw in New Jersey, has submitted a fee schedule for providing such services, the total of which is not to exceed $15,000. Whereas the anticipated term of the contract is 12 months from June 1, 2025, through May 31, 2026, whereas the funds will be available in account 501, 204, 205, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the 25 municipal budget. Whereas Associated Appraisal, Inc., has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification that certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will provide them, prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas the business entity disclosure certification and the determination of value will be placed on file with this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with, as along with the municipal clerk, a contract with Associated Appraisal Group, Inc., for an amount not to exceed, to exceed $15,000. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas the Department of Revenue and Finance has a need to acquire an electronic tax sale contractor on behalf of the township. Whereas ROK Industries, doing business as New Jersey Tax Lane Investors.com, 306 Arlington Road, Belmead, is a state of New Jersey certified contractor for electronic tax sales. And whereas ROK Industries has submitted a proposal to provide this service for $15 per line item not to exceed $4,500, the same rate as 2024. Whereas the township is desirous of utilizing this service to comply with its annual statutory compliance requirement for a municipal tax sale. Whereas funds are available in account 501, 206, 209, which have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the 2025 budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor and municipal clerk are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with ROK Industries for the electronic tax sale services at a rate of $15 per line item not to exceed $4,500. Further, a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the township clerk. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Mayor, would you want me to read Commissioner Tucci's?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Tucci has one resolution. Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participation in programs offered. Whereas the department has determined a need to refund families. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund payments of recreation programs in the amounts listed below. 65 River Road, Apartment 416, bounce out the stigma, $250. 124 North Road, travel basketball, $125. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you for reading Commissioner Tucci's. Commissioner Scarpelli, I see you don't have any on for the evening.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, this is our clicket and ticket resolution. Whereas there were 505 motor vehicle fatalities in New Jersey in 2024, whereas a large percentage of motor vehicle occupants killed in traffic crashes were not wearing a seatbelt. Whereas use of a seatbelt remains the most effective way to avoid death and serious injury in a motor vehicle crash. Whereas the National Highway Traffic Administration estimates that 135,000 lives were saved by safe, by safety belt usage nationally between 1975 and 2000. And whereas the state of New Jersey will participate in nationwide clicket or ticket seatbelt mobilization from May 19, June 1, 2025, in an effort to raise awareness and increase seatbelt usage through a combination of high visibility enforcement and public education. And whereas the Division of Highway Traffic Safety has set a goal of increasing the seatbelt usage rate in the state, in the state from the current level of 94% to 95.5%. Whereas the further increase in seatbelt uses in New Jersey will save lives in our roadways. Now therefore be resolved that the Township of Nutley declares its support for the clicket or ticket, ticket seatbelt mobilization both locally and nationally from May 19, June 1, to 2025, and pledges to increase awareness of mobilization and the benefits of seatbelt use. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have six on for this evening. The first is Resolution Number 12325. This is for Raffle License for Holy Family Church, License Number 3225. September 28, 2025, whereas applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Essex, County, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved. And the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. The next one I have on for this evening is Resolution Number 12425. And this is designating the month of May as Military Appreciation Month. Whereas the month of May is widely recognized as Military Appreciation Month, designated as such by Congress in 1999 as a special time to honor and recognize contributions, sacrifices, and services of members of the Armed Forces, past and present. And whereas the U.S. military is made up of the six following branches, Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Air Force, Space Force, and Coast Guard, whereas over 1.3 million men and women currently serve actively within those six branches of the United States military. Whereas the citizens of the Township of Nutley are grateful and appreciative of the service that all active members of the military and veterans have provided for their nation. And therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognizes and celebrates the month of May as Military Appreciation Month. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye. The next one I have on for this evening is Resolution Number 12525. Whereas every day, 125 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 260 are shot and wounded with an average of nearly 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas the state of New Jersey has 437 gun deaths every year with a rate of 4.8 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state 5.3 billion each year, of which 168.9 million is paid by taxpayers. Whereas supportive of the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and increase in city gun violence. Whereas in January 13, January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15. On June 6, 2025, to recognize the 28th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize national gun violence awareness day and wear orange in tribute of Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and loved ones of those victims. Whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when in the woods. And orange is the color that symbolizes the value of human life. Whereas anyone can join the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 6, the first Friday of June in 2025, to help raise awareness about gun violence. Whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. And therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey declares Friday, June 6, 2025, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
The next one I have on for this evening is Resolution Number 12625. Whereas this year's 2025 Men's Health Month theme is centered on closing the empathy gap in men's health through advocacy, awareness, and action. Whereas the empathy gap refers to a lack of care, funding, and support for men's issues, including health, education, and emotional well-being. Whereas men's challenges are often overlooked, leading to fewer resources, delayed care, and limited awareness. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of six years less than women, with African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. Many of these deaths can be prevented by eating proper diets, exercising, getting regular health checkups, including prostate examinations. Whereas Men's Health Month is a time for the public to recognize the mental and physical needs of men and boys while encouraging fathers to be role models for their children through preventative health screenings, healthy living, and seeking needed help. Whereas the growing epidemic of suicide and substance abuse requires special effort to raise awareness of unrecognized, undiagnosed depression and mental stress in boys and men. Whereas Friday, June 13, 2025, has been designated as Wear Blue Day in Nutley when individuals are encouraged to wear blue in effort to raise awareness about the concerns surrounding men's health. And therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognize the month of June as Men's Health Month, and encourage all male residents of Nutley to pursue preventive health practices and early detection efforts so as to live longer and healthier lives, so as to continue to be positively influenced in the lives of all in the lives of all those they touch so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
The next one I have on for this evening is resolution number 12725 be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that Jonathan Bruno Esquire be reappointed as township attorney for the Township of Nutley for a one year term effective May 20th 2025 May 20th 2025 through May 19th 2026 so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
I would also share Jonathan your advice and counsel has been invaluable I am always impressed with and I continue to be impressed with your knowledge of governmental services and all of the pitfalls that go with it across not only contract law labor law and actually state and local government governance so I gladly vote yes.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Yes, Mayor I'd just like to say that Mr. Bruno does a lot of a very good job not only with the law but also the other nuances of being the town attorney that come with that job and you know for a young man I could say that because I'm old for a young man he has the wisdom of an old soul so I proudly vote yes.
Commissioner Pacheco.
I'll say it as a young man if you don't mind Joe but Jonathan you're part of the family here in Nutley and dapple on far far from the tree as as we know your upbringing is a testament of who you are today you're always there for us professionally friendly whatever the needs are people comfortable on 24 hours a day and you're just a great friend to have so I vote I too.
Mayor Kelly.
Thank you I'm voting I but last year when we read this resolution your law partner was here so it's nice that you got to actually hear the accolades yourself I agree with the sentiments everyone else said it's one thing to be knowledgeable of the law which you are a consummate professional and know the law inside and out but as Commissioner Scarpelli said knowing the laws only half the battle you have to manage personalities and there's a lot of big personalities on this this stage and you do a very good job navigating all the ins and outs for all of us and we greatly appreciate your counsel and advice.
I.
I.
I said I voted I at the beginning but I'll vote say I again so you got six or five eyes out of four.
So Mayor I'd just like to amend my comments slightly.
Sure.
As being the oldest member of the board present my comments were grounded on the fact that I'm the oldest one here.
Thank you for your wisdom Commissioner. The last one I have on for this evening is a resolution number 12825 and this is introduced on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners this is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley authorizing the engagement of FAR Planning FAR Planning LLC to provide plan and technical review services in connection with the Franklin Avenue redevelopment area. Where the needs of certain professional services that are to be rendered and performed by person authorized by law to practice in a recognized profession whose practice is regulated by law whereas the performance of said professional service requires knowledge and advanced type in the field of learning and prolonged formal courses specialized training and instruction as the seniors from general academic instruction apprenticeship whereas funds are available for the purpose of this endeavor from account number 501 5-01-226-205 and a certificate of availability of funds has been filed with the chief financial officer of the township in Nutley in accordance with the local budget law whereas services rendered pursuant to this resolution shall not exceed $15,000 in the aggregate whereas FAR has completed and submitted the business entity disclosure certification which certifies the firm has not made any disqualifying disqualifying reportable contributions to a political candidate or candidate committee in the township in the previous one year that would violate any of the laws or executive orders of the New Jersey law election enforcement commission disclosure requirements that and that the contract will bar the firm from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract whereas local public contracts law requires that this resolution be publicly advertised now therefore by the now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that in accordance with the local public contracts law hereby authorizes and approves the award of professional services contract to the firm FAR Planning LLC pursuant to a non fair and open process in accordance with the provisions of New Jersey statutes annotated 19:44 Alpha dash 20.5 to provide a plan and technical review services in accordance with the contract for professional services be further resolved that the chief financial officer has executed a certification funds for the contract and sufficient funds not to exceed $15,000 will be available for said contract through the applicable municipal budget be further resolved that the anticipated term of this contract is from May 20 2025 through December 31st 2025 be further resolved that the mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized to direct authorized and directed to execute seal and deliver said contract for professional services on behalf of and in the name of the township and be it further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and business entity disclosure campaign contribution shall be placed on file with this resolution and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be published as required by law within 10 days of its passage so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Hi.
Mayor Kelly.
Hi.
At this time we have no further business we'll be opening up the meeting to the public for anyone who wishes to be heard on any matter they may approach the microphone and state their name for the record anyone who wishes to address the Board of Commissioners please approach the microphone and state your name for the record please.
Good evening my name is Habib Misri I am a resident at 293 Chestnut Street I just want to address the matter of the overnight parking that affect us like directly the renters of this town I'm not asking to challenge the legality of this town to enact the ordinance I'm just saying there's this part where this ordinance gets applied on us as residents I don't think it's fair because like if I'm gonna take a permit for a parking that is almost like 10 minutes walk from my from the from the apartment and I have to walk in the snow and the rain it's like really not not fair for for us as as residents in this town I tried to search for like a legal reason why with this law be applied on us as residents honestly I couldn't find so if you can clarify this issue or like even like I've asked so many people that are residents here old residents nobody understands why this law applies on us as residents it is nice that we have it for non residents but us why is it us like paying for this stuff with tickets.
So there's a there's a number of reasons for the the ordinance safety security the well being of the community but I'll leave that over to Commissioner Pacheco and public safety to address who handles the enforcement of that.
How are you so it does help our police officers it helps the fire trucks it differentiates our us from you know our surrounding towns I don't know if you ever drove through Lynnhurst where I own some properties when it snows you know the plows can't get curb to curb and you know we when I first got elected 17 years ago I think it was we had a committee we were thinking about like some type of permit parking at the time as a board it didn't really go anywhere but you live in apartments right on on.
293 Chestnut.
Yeah I mean the only thing that I could say to you and I and I understand the issue and I grew up in a household with three brothers and we lived on Park Avenue so it was quite challenging to park to but when you rented the apartment you knew that there was no parking with the apartments I'm sure right.
I did yes but when I rented an apartment I wasn't engaged but now.
You were what?
I wasn't engaged so my fiance lives.
Oh so what do you get one space you have one space there with the apartment?
One space per apartment even if it was like two.
I mean I I would think you know I would think that it's a very heavy lift for us to change that ordinance you know in town like I said it does help our police department especially you know if they see a strange car or you know a car parked on the street overnight you know they'll run the plate see where it goes to all that stuff so it really does help us I've been in Nutley for 60 years now it's been it's been the ordinance here for you know 100 years but you know I don't think that we have the votes here to change it as well but maybe down the road we can look into some kind of permit parking but what I urge all the residents to do because this is probably other than speeding the biggest complaint I get in Nutley and there's a lot of people that are for the ordinance and don't ever want to see it changed too so it's you know it depends kind of where you sit but I would I would just recommend that maybe you ask a neighbor like I tell people all the time you might have an elderly neighbor in your neighborhood that the kids are out of the house you know she want may he or she may want a car parked there you know it looks like somebody's home have you tried that?
I understand this but like I have to like ask a neighbor to like burden them with my car and not like the police.
Well then it's truthfully truthfully it's still it's the law there's no overnight parking.
I understand but the thing is that like the towns around us like Moncler and Bloomfield they have like the sticker permits for residents you just put it on the car and they can park on the street and like you told me about the snow there isn't special ordinance for the snow it's not like this is not for the snow specifically and for the safety of the town how how is this affecting us from us like how's it.
Let me ask you a question where are you where were you living before in Nutley?
I used to live in Clifton.
Oh Clifton they have overnight parking there you're allowed to park on the street.
Yeah yeah we parked even like.
We could we could debate it all night long and I sympathize for you I understand but that would be a board vote so you don't need this to petition me you know we would have to vote on that as a board and I don't think as a board of you know up your governing body that we're you know I won't speak for everybody but I don't think that we're interested in changing it maybe down the road because the traffic has and the growth in Nutley has changed maybe the permit parking we could kind of review it again but we have and there were so many people against that because then they feel that it leads to other things as well you want to jump in Commissioner?
Sure you know as the DPW Commissioner yes you know we do have when the road is snow covered but you can see in the surrounding towns they have that these cars are still parked on the street the plowing is terrible our streets are plowed curb to curb every snowstorm we probably have the the best cleanest streets in the whole area after a snowstorm and I I am not in favor of changing the overnight parking I'm not in favor of permit parking I like to leave it the way it is it's safe for the town I do sympathize with you I feel you know I feel bad for you and the situation that you're in but you know for the greater good of the community as far as I'm concerned it could stay this way hopefully till I'm no longer on this earth so.
Well I I want to just note something that I understand it is for the safety but there is not a single night that there is no parking there is no cars parked on the street so it's not really doing anything.
Imagine if we didn't have the ordinance how many cars would be parked there and they they're ticketed most of the times.
I'm not saying like take it off completely just leave it for non residents and just us let us park give us permits like give us we'll pay for it monthly like in Moncler they charge it 40 bucks is like revenue for the town you can put it on the on this this financial statement that's the thing like it's from every single person then just waiting for to give him a ticket and wait for that $25 to come in it just it's a revenue stream you know it's just it's like a logical thing.
We understand that the the revenue argument however as Commissioner Pacheco and Commissioner Scarpelli said there's some things money can't buy and that's safety and security both in terms of plowing the streets and also aiding our police officers and protecting the streets unfortunately.
Is there a report like is there a study statistics that like prove that this works because the town surrounding us Moncler is safe and they don't have this so is there like some kind of I'm sorry.
Moncler is safe.
Yeah it's very very absolutely.
I don't know about that I would compare our crime data to their crime data any day. It's not it's not even it's not even close actually there was something there last month.
Well Moncler is a bigger city anyways.
Really do our cops do a fantastic job here.
Not talking to police.
If nobody else has a comment I you know do you want to add to it Tom or?
Just you know when we look at things financially to change the tax rate one penny takes a half a million dollars that's $50 per average residential household which the tendency is not so it's very nominal and you would need quite a few of those permits to even come close to even coming up to that that level you would also have to consider the additional cost that the township would incur as a result of the change which has been in the past was indicated that would require a change in the shift structure for during nighttime so I'm as Commissioner Scarpelli has already stated I am not in favor of changing it and financial reasons are there's not enough of it there.
Okay well thank you I appreciate the chance to speak about this issue but is there a different way we can approach this or this is the only way that end this matter?
I sorry you know I applaud you for coming and I just want you to know I don't want I don't want you to think you're getting roughed up you know we've been in this town our whole lives and you know this is and and Nutley is a great town and you know we want to keep what works here and the traditions and that kind of thing and and my heart does bleed for you it does but we're not changing this governing body is just never going to change it so you know try a neighbor if there's anybody I know that is by the apartments that I hear of that I could put you onto I will but again we I don't mean to be so you know brash for you.
Thank you very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners Dr. Mark Lyle I am working with you in Nutley I just wanted to read a prepared statement if that's okay.
Just do me a favor sir raise the mic up yeah there you go point it up there you go.
I live at 229 Kingsland Street right next to the proposed warehouse I have some serious concerns I'd like to bring to your attention first I want to highlight the troubling history of the property there was a class action lawsuit because of hazardous chemicals on the site resulting in a 17.5 million dollar settlement when I contacted Mr. Diaz from on three about this he assured me that the property was remediated in 2016 however I've lived in that property for over 25 years and I can attest that this was not part of the soil replacement area where they're proposing to build the warehouse so I would respectfully request that the Department of Environmental Protection would clear the site before any construction is done also on three claims to have conducted two traffic studies showing that local roads can handle the expected traffic however I've contacted the Department of Transportation the administrator Eileen Sosa the engineer Asif Mahmood and Officer Andres Mejia they all came out they looked at the jug handle going from Cathedral onto Kingsland Street and they all said that it posed a significant safety risk there's already multiple near misses every day the idea of having tractor trailers going in and out here would only make it more of a danger on three said the hours of operation would be from 5am to 12 midnight this would mean 18 wheelers coming in and out creating serious noise air pollution not only just to our little surrounding area but will always impact it will also impact the broader Nutley because they'll be coming from Route 21 as well as Route 3 when I've spoken with the members of the community they're shocked and dismayed that this could actually be happening I have over 2,000 we just hit 2,000 today signed online petitions and the majority of them are residents of Nutley who all say that they don't want the warehouse we know that this would bring property values down in Nutley and right now I think I just saw an article we're like 85th in the United States with how hot our property values are so this would be a dramatic hit to our beautiful little town here lastly Mr. Diaz has communicated that he was open to putting other commercial businesses at this location I'm hoping that some kind of agreement can be. I'm hoping that some kind of agreement can be reached regarding these alternatives, which will support and improve the property values of our Nutley home. Thank you, Your Honor and Commissioners, for your time.
Thank you. And I believe we spoke on the phone and as I said earlier on the phone, Mr. Diaz has been dealing in half-truths. There's nothing permitted to be built on that property as of right now. They're still going through the planning board process. The hearing was supposed to take place tomorrow, but we got it last, I don't want to say last minute, but later, late last week, we got a significant amendment to the plans they proposed, which required us to send it back to our experts, and it would not be feasible for our experts to review the amount of amendments in a timely fashion before the meeting tomorrow. So the hearing on that site has been adjourned to at least June 4. That's what we're shooting for. It all depends on our experts. And I think this entire board has said we would fight the truck terminal or warehouse or whatever term that you want to call it to the bitter end. It's still ongoing litigation. It's still pending appeal. And no one on this board is in favor of that. And we're diligently working and trying to negotiate a better alternative on the site. I can't really go into details regarding those negotiations because they're ongoing. But if anyone else wants to share their thoughts on it.
Just one thing, Mayor, is that you and I are at a little disadvantage here in that we have to be careful what we say as we sit as the, on the planning board. They'll have to decide the matter. We don't want to be accused of prejudging this in any way. So no matter our personal feelings, we have to reserve judgment at least in what we say publicly.
I'd just like to add that, you know, we have a much, much better relationship right now with Gene Diaz than we've had in the past. And I really think that things are bright in the future. And I think I'm hopeful that things will work out on there. And I would, you know, as all of us have said, you know, that's not what we want. And we're hoping that Gene is moving forward. Thank you.
Well, and thank you for your comments. They're very well organized. And I applaud you for being able to gather 2,000 signatures with additional support. I would encourage that because this is a matter that's not just for the Board of Commissioners to decide. It's up to the town to decide. So the public voice is, I think, is very important here. But given the direction of where I hope we're going, I believe we'll be able to decide a better outcome.
Lori Mulready, Stephen Williams Street. I was here in February about the parking meters that you raised, the amount of quarters you put in now. So if you're worried about trying to, want to raise money, why isn't anybody doing anything about the people who are parking and not putting any money in the meters? I mean, I see it all the time, all up and down Franklin, red light. Nobody's, I'm observing one particular person that has a business or works in the business, a smoke shop, and he uses that free space all the time like it's his own place. I'm feeding the extra money in. Why are these people not paying? Up and down in front of ShopRite, red lights, red lights. Nothing, no tickets, nobody's getting tickets. And why do I have to pick up their slack? They're not paying anything. Who is looking out for that?
So, you know, we have two parking enforcement officers that do the lots and all the avenue and the on-street parking. Because the red light is blinking, because we've gone to online paying and text paying, that doesn't change the red light. So you can't tell whether the red light blinking, if they put money in the meter or not. So although you think there may be not money in there, they could have texted, they could have paid online. So the red light doesn't change when they pay by text or online.
Well, how do you know? How doesn't the person like me know?
We, well, I don't know how you know, but we know. We know because we have the computer that tells us if they paid online or not. So you would not know, but our parking enforcement officers would.
Because this one guy from Florida, he's got a Florida car, and he works in the smoke shop, and he's like, I see, because I go to Laundromat, and I've been watching.
But you don't know if he went inside and texted the, to the phone. You wouldn't know that.
I just want to know if there's anybody looking out for that.
Yes, we have two parking enforcement officers.
So there are tickets being issued?
There's tickets being issued if people don't pay the meters, correct?
Okay, well, so if I don't pay a meter and that red light's going, I could get away with it unless he, unless he actually goes into a computer to see if I paid? I mean, I could-
Yes, unfortunately, unfortunately, that's the way it works, yes. They have a computer that they can look at on their phone. They don't have to go onto a computer. They can use their phone, yes. It's an application that the parking enforcement's used to see which meters are paid for and which aren't.
Because I never see any police checking or anything.
They're out there.
Because I'm up and down Franklin all day long, you know? I could see, you know.
They see you, I'll tell them to say hello.
And like I said, well, if I don't pay, I'll probably be the one who gets a ticket. I'm the old-fashioned, I do the quarters, okay? You know, that's me, you know? So, but there's just no way that that guy could not be paying.
You wouldn't know, you wouldn't know if he was. You wouldn't know if he was or wasn't.
You could-
Where is the location that you think the guy's not paying? Maybe we could send the cop there tomorrow and check it for you.
Oh, I would appreciate that.
Tell me where it is.
Okay, across Capital One Bank, the smoke shop.
At what time?
Try Friday afternoon.
Okay, Sam, will you get the information? And we'll send Mr. Hickey over.
The Laundromat, okay? And I see, it's like his own personal free space. I'm thinking, now you're telling me that they could pay? I did not know that. So, but I would like to know.
If you look at the meters, right? If you look at the meters, there's stickers on the meters that tell you that you could pay either with cash, you could pay by app, app, or pay by text.
Well, I have to admit this, but I have to get my glasses out to read that. I got my quarters in my hand, and I'm like-
Listen, and those who are paying by the app or online or by text are paying an increased fee than you are by paying quarters. So you're actually saving money by using quarters.
Okay, well, that's good. And I'm doing something right. Is there any way that you can reduce the amount again? Because, you know?
Yeah, we're, right now, our fee is where it should be in comparison to everybody around us. We were low, we were low.
Well, it's just a little hard, but-
I understand. I know, the last time you were here.
Yeah.
That it, you know-
I keep seeing this guy all the time. You know, so what's going on?
But you, like I said, just because, just because he gets out of his car and walks into a shop doesn't mean he's not paying.
Yeah, and the same with in front of ShopRite, all up and down there?
Same thing.
They could be doing the same. All right, I just thought I'd bring that up. And also, one quick thing, one quick thing. I've been noticing increased noise from cars with their, what is it? Engine, exhaust or whatever. Is there an ordinance for that?
Unfortunately, not that I know of. But it is annoying. And when I'm sometimes sitting in front of my own, well, my former store, I should say at this point. But whenever I'm around town and, you know, I'm on Park Avenue a lot with my father right now, and it's annoying. But is there anything we could do, Mr. Hickey, about that? No. They basically have this, you know, handcuff the police, you know, pretty much. Hopefully, it's going to change in the future, but we're worried about, we're worried about noise. We, you know, these police officers are arresting kids, robbing cars, houses, all that. And, you know, before the cop shift is over, these kids are out.
I live at the senior housing on Williams Street.
Right.
And those cars are speeding around all hours of the day and night with that exhaust, I mean, 2:00 in the morning, come on. You know, and I'm like, well, where's the police? Don't they see this?
Well, no, the cops do see it. Unfortunately, there's nothing they could do about it. I mean, if they're speeding, they could give them a ticket for speeding, and they have, and we write plenty, you know? But they can't be everywhere at the same time, too, you know? So, you know, the call volume in the police department has probably quadrupled since I'm in the seat. So it's, you know, they're very busy there, you know? So they do a great job, but we can't be everywhere.
I see them when they come to our building for medical emergencies and stuff. I see it, you know, very good.
Thank you.
No, I even told them when they had all the protest against the cops, I said, I told the police, I said, I'm proud of you, you know?
That's nice.
Always been, you know, always been. Nutley Police, very good.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, Ms. Plino, do we have a need for executive this evening? I'll entertain a motion for an executive session.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County of Essex State and New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley moving to close executive session to discuss litigation. Be it further resolved that a time when such disclosure discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Scarpelli? Commissioner Petrakko? Mayor Kelly?
And lucky for the business this evening, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I need a second, please. Can I have a-